I can't hear them. Present. Okay, all right. Well, it's now 11:32, 11:33. Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, we can get started.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, before you get started, we're joined by Counselor Whitfield, as well as Counselor Letterman and Counselor Ramos. And I'm admitting Counselor Allen now.
That's what you're on.
I'm sorry? Just shows I'm a true fan, Tom.
Have a good year.
Okay, I'm going to, are we ready?
Sorry. Yes, we are ready.
Are we ready in the Situation Room?
We are.
So the update for May 28th of the City Council, the total cases in the Commonwealth as of yesterday, 94,220, Hampton County, 5,845. We are 6.2%, 6.20% of the total cases in the Commonwealth in Hampton County. The city of Springfield, as of yesterday, 2,304. We are 39.41% of the cases in all of Hampton County. The deaths statewide is 6,547, 4,041 of those are in long-term care facilities statewide, that's 61.72%. In Hampton County, there are 554 deaths, which is 8.46% of all the deaths in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In Springfield, we are at 95 deaths, which is 16.60% of the cases in Hampton County. Forty-nine of the deaths in the city of Springfield are from long-term care facilities. Forty-six are residential by address. Forty-nine are white, 51.57%, 19 are black, 20%, 26 are Hispanic, 27.36%, and one Asian, which is 1.05%. These, this data is taking off of the burial permits that are submitted to the Department of Health and Human Services. Burial permits and death certificates are not HIPAA-protected. So we do have names, we have addresses, we have ages. And so what I'm going, and race, obviously, what I will do is break out the ages and add those to these percentages for my next report. Patrick Sullivan, I and Tim Sheehan will be meeting with Karen Jeffers and Ron Willoughby to talk about the transition plan for the facility on Worthington Street, or what needs to happen as far as continuing support services for that structure. We continue to visit the stores to enforce the education for compliance around face coverings. We have found that our residents are, for the most part, complying with face coverings, although obviously there are situations where we need to try to educate those individuals. There's still only one citation that was handed out for that part of our compliance, the face covering for the public. Elder Affairs has distributed 8,148 breakfasts and lunches. In March, there was 1,652, April, 3,304, May, 1,596, for a total of 8,148. All of the departments that I work with who serve the public are in the process of assuring that we are complying. As you know, the libraries won't open until June 8th. The senior centers are not until Phase 4, but we'll continue to do our Neil outreach with them. TJO is doing by appointment, there are no adoptions at this point, so the services have been scaled down. And Veterans is in this building, and they are taking applications by appointment for new veterans applications. The checks for Chapter 115 are continuing to be mailed out to veterans. Health and Human Services is by appointment only as well for the food permits. I will let Ed talk about some of the work that we're currently doing. I know Counselor Letterman, you sent me a text about burial grounds around the church that's being sold. I've passed that over to Ed Pula, and he's going to do the research for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we'll just go around the room to see if anyone else would like to say a few words. Before we do that, Brendan, I just want to highlight to you, I know you said it might be a problem on their end, but I keep trying to let Counselor Fenton and Counselor Allen in, and for whatever reason, it is not allowing me to do so. So if it's on their end, and there's not much we can do about it, but if it's on our end, if you could just look into it, it'd be greatly appreciated. We can move on. Is there anybody else? I know I see a lot of people in the Situation Room, Pat, TJ, Tom, Solicitor, did you, did you guys want to say anything before we open it up for questions?
He's going to, Justin, and I thought Pat could give you a brief kind of update of how we went with the buildings reopening yesterday.
Okay, sounds good. Why don't you go for it, Pat?
Real quick, Mr. President, to the members, we've spent $5.4 million in deficit spending as of last Monday, and we've lost $3.5 million in projected revenue over the same period last year, so just trying to keep the cows on the lube on where we are financially.
Okay. Um, Pat?
Yes, counselors, we had a successful opening this week, and today is going very smooth as well. People are making the appointments. My understanding is the clerk is scheduled from the first time they open, in the morning, right from the day, 15-minute intervals, which is good. I just stopped down, and she's very happy, and everyone's cooperating. The parks continue to be open, and it was great this weekend. People were using the picket tables, safe social distance, so the parks are being used the way we are, and I'm just proud of our residents and following the guidelines, so we're not having any issues, as you're seeing in other parts of the country. The farmer's market opened this week as well, they had a very slow opening, but at least they're open. And then with the zoo, the mayor felt it was important because they serve so many youth to have bath attendants at the bathrooms before they open, so TJ and HR are working on allowing us to move forward with that. And our understanding as of today, they might have had five people sign up. So we also want to put a bath attendant at each golf course. Counsel, President Hershey, I brought that up at our last meeting, and we brought that back to the mayor, and he agreed to move forward with that, so we're hopeful by next week we'll have the bathrooms open. The concessions opened at both golf courses and the park under the restaurant guidelines. Tennis courts opened on Monday with the restrictions, no double matches, and following the state guidelines. And we are currently working on our protocols for Phase 2 or Phase 3.
Thank you, Pat, and you guys did a wonderful job at the golf courses. I was pleased to see that they were, you know, we were able to play, and we didn't come in contact with anybody, certainly not within six feet, so I thought it was done very well. So I appreciate the work that you, that you did on both the golf courses, and I think a lot of other people did as well, so good work. All right, so with that being said, we will now open it up, and Brendan, I hate to do this to you, but they still are having trouble. I know I just asked you for a phone number for the meeting, so if you could just type that into the group chat, and then I will text it to Counselor Fenton and Counselor Allen, who for whatever reason are having a difficult time logging in. Are there any questions? If you guys want to raise your hand in the queue, it'd be greatly appreciated. Counselor Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. First question this morning is related to availability of testing. I know we've seen some varied reports coming out relative to testing being available at certain CVSs. I know there's some testing seemingly available at the Mason Square Health Center, so I'm just wondering if we have a cohesive list of testing sites throughout the city, and also along with that, what the requirements at those various sites are. And the reason I ask is now that we have the phased reopening occurring, obviously there's more individuals, more individuals who are going to be out at work and who may be interested in being tested, as well as, I know antibody testing is also something we've heard requests around, and I know there was one urgent care facility a couple of weeks ago that was doing antibody testing, but I'm just wondering if, if we compiled any lists to that effect.
So I know that you are aware of the Bay State sites, which is High Street, Brightwood, and Mason Square. Those sites still require a physician's note, and individuals who are asymptomatic without a physician's note are still currently not tested at those sites. Karen Health Center is testing its patients only, and so again, they are not testing the general public. CBS has said that they were going to stand up a site in Springfield, to my knowledge, that has not happened. Walmart is supposed to stand up a site in Springfield as well at their Boston Road facility. I am not sure, as I sit here, whether that happened or not. It's my understanding that both of those sites, the CBS site, as well as the site at Walmart, will also be testing individuals who have a physician's note. So there's not widespread asymptomatic testing that's being done in the city. I forgot to mention the Caruth Street site that Bay State has stood up as well, so that's what I know. As far as antibody testing is concerned, it's been reported that there have been, at least on some cases, a 40% false negative. So people are reporting negative, who that, when we test are positive. So quite frankly, at this point, I am not in favor of widespread antibody testing until we can have a little bit more assurance that those tests are accurate. But that's currently, Counselor, what I know about testing sites as well as antibody screening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Gomez.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. My question is, just quite frankly, I think it's for Tom, maybe. Tom, I know it was reported on the media, you've seen that Counselor Hurst, myself, and Counselor Letterman, and I know that Counselor Ramos had did something over there at Godfrey Triangle, specific to the Veterans Memorial Day. Can you talk to us a little bit about the decision on how you guys, or what was the reasoning why we did the wreaths over the flags? Because over the weekend, and up to, up to the weekend, I was, my, my office, my personal, where I work, was bombarded with phone calls, looking for answers from different veteran service officers. I know that they did reach out to, to the Veteran Services Department, and they were told that the administration made the decision that they weren't going to do the flags. But I honestly just wanted to hear from you guys, just to fully understand the spectrum. I just went out there to support our veterans on that day, so did, you know, some of us, and it was very fast-moving, so it wasn't something that was, you know, we, I think a lot of the colleagues that I spoke to after the fact, where it was unbeknownst to them, that they weren't even aware that we weren't doing the flags. I know that you guys did a private event wreath, a wreath ceremony with Congressman Neal, but moving forward, if you could just high, give us a little bit more information on that, just because, you know, we received a letter yesterday from some, I'm not sure, VFW, or, or, just, we're, we're starting to get a lot of pushback, and, you know, I just want to be able to be readily available when it comes to the veterans community, how to, you know, better mitigate this, these questions that are being asked.
I'm going to take this one because veterans, as you know, is a part of my cabinet. So the decision around flagging the graves was made with the Veterans Department, the administration, and with the guidelines around social distancing in place. So let me start with the fact that the veterans, Tom Belton and his staff, made the decision that they were unable to flag the graves individually based on the lack of volunteers that were, were available because of COVID-19. The other challenge was around flagging graves and social distancing with our volunteers. Everybody wanted to do the individual grave flagging, including the mayor. So it wasn't an administrative decision that was made without input from public health, input from the veterans departments. And so the decision was made in order to keep the social distancing requirements and the number of individuals that can be gathered in one place, which is still currently at 10, to be able to get all of those guidelines, that's what, why the decisions were made. And it was a very painful decision for everyone involved, because that's something that we take pride in doing. So those are the reasons why we did not individually flag the graves, and those are the reasons we didn't have a large contingent of individuals at the ceremony. The mayor did not want to forget Veterans Day, it was very important to the administration, but yet we knew that based on our guidance, we could not do it in the way that we would have liked to. So I'm happy to answer questions about our decision-making. It was made with public health in mind, veterans in mind, as well as working with the administration.
All right, Mr. President, if you don't mind if I can add a little bit more context. Thank you for, for answering that question. The fact, the fact of the matter is, Helen, is that there's a veteran service officer meeting that happens on the state on a consistent basis, that we're leading up to this, up to this point as of right now, where we're at, that you said that you have gotten guidance, and it was coming from the Veteran Services Department. And, you know, obviously, you know that we have four veteran service officers in my office, and we're consistently on these calls. And Springfield, Springfield is the only one that's never on those calls. I have separate BSOs that are willing to, to, to write letters, and, and to write letters from Ludlow, from Wilberham, from West Springfield, from their surrounding communities, that we never have a representative on this call. And they talked about, you know, flagging these, these individuals. I found it, I found it humiliating, despite the fact that we're, we're in the public good, that other cities and counties gave up their flags to make sure that we can flag our veterans. And I understand, you know, we have the, the 10 people or less. I, I truly understand that. You know, I've been a very proponent on social distancing, but essentially, you know, there was a Gold Star Mother out of Oak, out of Oak Grove that works here, that flagged the whole place by herself. St. Michael's did it on themselves. We could have created a plan, something that could have at least left the flags for families to come, or people to come on their own to flag some of these areas. Obviously, we don't have a real map, a roadmap, on where all these sites are, are, are located in each of the, excuse me, in each of the, the cemeteries, because by law, we're required to have a Graves' Officer, and Springfield, for the last 15 years, hasn't had a Graves' Officer either. So some of these even grave sites, which I know during the pandemic, I'm not going to raise this issue, but the truth and the fact of the matter is, in the budget last year, and I know this is, now this is for Tom, and you were, hold on for a second, I need you to go over there, please, thank you. So during this, the budget season, we moved over $200,000 out of the veterans budget, and essentially, when it comes to these grave sites that need this, this TLC in tender love and care, down to the Revolutionary War ones that are in Springfield Cemetery. And when we went, Jesse and I were ready to leave, we came in contact with a gentleman that's a grave officers out of Westfield, that comes in voluntarily out of his work to take care of our own graves. It was a humbling experience to put these stakes down, and I always usually put the flags down, because I'm a, I, we all come from veterans' families, but in retrospect, I'm going to be honest, I think that something could have been at least issued a statement that we're not going to do the flags, instead of people calling, because we usually put them out a week before, calling us, why aren't the flags down, why aren't the flags down? And we didn't know, you know, and, and in respect to wanting to keep people safe, I honor that, and I'm, and I thank all of you for, for looking out for the public good, but essentially, on this day, when the phases were coming out, where people could social distance themselves in a cemetery, I think that something more could have had been done, because you, ma'am, you had stated, and I'm not attacking you, I'm just speaking out of compassion, and I have a place of, you know, a concern, that when I went to Springfield Cemetery, the Winchester veterans, including Tom, he said he couldn't have volunteers, but he had four volunteers out there with him putting down flags before we got there. You know, so it's like, it, it really is, it makes me feel, was there even an effort to ask for volunteers, or to figure out a system of doing so? It was like the same thing when, when we decided for the virtual graduation, we said there's too many schools, we have too many people, we can't do it, and then when we have a public outpour, a, a, a public outcry, we changed it, and we figured something out. And that's all I'm saying, is we could have figured something out that could have worked, maybe, because this woman came and organized this, and obviously, I was concerned, and so was myself, as Counselor Letterman, there was more than 10 people at the meeting place, but as, that I know of, I know that we separated everybody into different places, and everybody was maybe two people going down different lanes, and it was very separated, and we got it accomplished. But I just, it, it just makes me feel bad for Springfield, that we were looked like in that light, and we didn't have more of an advisory or a reasoning behind it. And it just, I, I just felt, I, I, I was in a bad place, but I played it to the fact that I was there to honor the soldiers, and I'm happy that we had the, at least the wreaths and the ceremony, but it's just, it put us as counselors in a bad place to have to answer these questions. And that's what has consistently happened sometimes, and some of these issues that we bring up, is that we want to work with you guys, we want to work with the commissioners, we want to understand what we're doing, but essentially, sometimes, we're not given that, that right, that chance to be able to get engaged or understand when these decisions are made, so we can be better, better counselors to serve. So I felt slated and hurt that I couldn't, I couldn't be a better counselor to the veterans community specific to that. But I'm going to be honest, other than that, everything else, I'm very, very happy with what's going on with the administration, very happy. But this right here really hurt me.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. If anyone wants to respond, we'll certainly have your response, and then we're going to move on. We just want to be mindful of other people's time, and I want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to ask their questions. So Commissioner, if you want to respond, you can, if not, then we will, we'll move on. Or Tom?
It was my understanding that there was a press release that did go out describing what the city was going to do for Veterans Day, that it was going to be a modified service. So let me start there. I'm, I'm also disappointed with you that our veterans, BSOs, are not on those calls, and I will follow up with that as well. But thank you, Counselor Gomez, I can hear the passion in your voice, and I very much appreciate your bringing this up, and I will certainly follow up with our Veterans Department, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Commissioner, before we move on, I know we have Counselor Allen, and we also have Counselor Fenton, who are now joining. They were trying to get in at the outset of the meeting, and they were unable to do so. Can you just give them a quick update on the numbers that you mentioned, and then we'll move on to Counselor Davila, who has his hands raised in the queue?
Certainly. Okay, so what I quickly said was the total case is 94,220, Hampton County, 5,845. Hampton County is 6.20% of all of the cases in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The city of Springfield is now 2,304, and that's 39.41% of all of the cases in Hampton County at this point. The deaths are 6,547 statewide, 4,041, or 61.72% of the state deaths are in long-term care facilities. Hampton County has 554 deaths, which is 8.46% of the deaths in the Commonwealth. Springfield is at 95 now, which is 16.60% of the deaths in Hampton County. Forty-nine are in long-term care facilities, 46 are residential by address. Forty-nine are white, which is 51.57%, 19 black, which is 20%, 26 Hispanic, which is 27.36%, and one Asian. Patrick Sullivan and I are meeting to, Patrick Sullivan, Tim Sheehan and I are meeting to, with Karen Jeffers and Ron Willoughby, to talk about the tent. We've been enforcing the regulations around education for compliance with face coverings, both with the public and with our businesses. Elder Affairs served 8,148 breakfasts and lunch in March, April, and May. Thank you.
Justin, you're muted.
Sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner, for repeating that information. I apologize to my colleagues who have heard that information previously, so thank you for bearing with me. Counselor Davila, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, or good afternoon, everybody. I got two quick questions, but I just have a quick clarification. Tom, excuse me, TJ, you said that the total deficit spending so far is how much?
Deficit spending?
Yeah, you gave some totals, I believe?
Five point four million dollars of deficit spending.
And the total revenue loss?
Three points, 3.5 million so far.
Thank you, TJ. So my question is, maybe this is a Tim Sheehan question, but if anybody can speak on this, maybe Tom. I started visiting all the small businesses in my district last week, and they all told me the same thing. They all told me they're hurting, they're hurting badly. Some of them are working on one quarter revenue capacity, they have lost, in essence, 70, 75% of their income. So my questions are, one, the restaurants in these four phase stages that we're going to be reopening, where are they in that, on those phases? Are they going to be Phase 3, Phase 4, once they start opening, to what capacity?
I apologize, I was trying to answer another email from someone else. Did you, you said you had a question as to when do restaurants reopen?
Right, I visited the restaurants last week, they all told me they're hurting badly, and just my question is, at what stage are they going to open? If you're stage late, Stage 2, Stage 3, and do we know any capacity, if they're going to start opening at a quarter capacity, 50% capacity?
So my, my understanding is they can open now, or takeout, or curbside. But in terms of a reopening, that's not until the next phase, which, as I understand, will be sometime in June, hopefully. But we have been having meetings internally, looking for ways to expand capacity, because we believe there will be some limitations, and, or restrictions as to what the capacity will be. So we're looking to, at areas where, where can we potentially make some public way available, whether it be more sidewalks, or even potentially in some areas, parts of the street, or there might be people that have some other land that they want to change the description of their licensed premises, for, for example, for service of alcohol-related beverages. So we've been meeting, we've been discussing the existing ordinance that apply, we've been looking at our regulations that apply, we, it's been a discussion between health, DPW, economic development, police, fire, building, and law. And so we, we hope to find ways to expedite any sort of permitting that's required. We're looking to see what Boston is doing, we've been looking to see what Chicago is doing, and, and we're trying to find all kinds of ways to see that people can get out and socialize more, and that we and that we can give a boost to the economy, particularly in the restaurant hospitality area. Um, I should note, uh, the latest we're hearing is, uh, that, uh, from, uh, the Gaming Commission meetings, uh, is that, uh, the, the, uh, we're expecting maybe beginning of July, uh, for, uh, casinos. Uh, um, so that, that's the latest I can give.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Pacula. And so the, my last question is, um, uh, maybe TJ, uh, I do believe in past meetings we talked about possibly more money coming down the pipe to help out small businesses and even having a prime upon three. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we were applying for some more grants. Do we know the status of that and what's going on with that?
So the grants that we have so far is 4.4 million, uh, that have come in through the entitlements. We have four, um, agencies sending, uh, our guidance on for public safety and for school department. And then, uh, in addition, we have an allocation from the state of 13.6 million dollars, uh, through the, the CARES money that the state got, uh, so that's coming to us. We need to submit an application to them by June 5th. Uh, most likely that application will be completed by tomorrow and to be submitted, um, to the state for their consideration.
Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, guys.
Are there any other questions from the council? Uh, Counselor Letterman followed by Counselor Gomez. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Whitfield followed by Counselor Letterman and Counselor Gomez. I apologize, my chat is not showing or, um, my participants is not showing the way it normally shows. So I can't see the order in which folks raise their hands. So I apologize. Bear with me.
For the record, I was, I was going to yield to Counselor Whitfield.
Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Um, is Commissioner still here?
Yeah.
Oh, hi. Um, I was just wondering, you know how you have the breakdown for, um, the deaths? Do we have that same breakdown for, uh, folks that are tested? As far as race goes?
No, the numbers that are given to us are not specifically, the numbers that we get are, uh, those individuals who are positive. So we don't have the total, uh, tests that are done within the, um, Commonwealth or within Hampton County at this point. I can give you the broad numbers, but I don't believe at this point they're broken by race and ethnicity. But I will check that for you, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you very much. And then, um, TJ, I just wanted to follow up on the deficit spending and ask, um, what is the majority of that 5.4 million going toward? The majority?
Good question. Uh, 3.2 million dollars is going to the laptops in the school department, uh, to help them, uh, get out the, uh, virtual learning or to get, to get, uh, virtual access. Uh, that's kind of the lion's share. Uh, then we have 393,000 for the food department, food service department for, uh, feeding, uh, the students at our schools. Uh, I have a contract with Vanpool to deliver laptops and meals. Uh, then we have the rest generally is for the PPE that, uh, we need to keep our public safety and, uh, city government open.
Thank you.
The tent. So I apologize, the tent also is a rather large expense.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Uh, just a quick follow-up. TJ, did the, um, do we know, did we pay for the previous laptops that they had? Uh, the city or did that come out of the school department's budget? I know they, they had purchased a number of laptops before even COVID-19 occurred.
The school department purchased, uh, for, uh, third through 12, grade three through 12. Uh, so the new purchases for actually K to two, to ensure that the, uh, the one-to-one ratio, uh, is where they're heading with, uh, all the devices.
And that did not come out of the school department's budget?
At this point, we're looking at potential, uh, grant money that's coming to the school department to pay for it. I've been in close contact with Superintendent Pat Rhodes, CFO, uh, to strategize on how to, how to make sure we pay for all these.
Got it. Um, so I will defer to Counselor Letterman and then Counselor Gomez. And then I don't know if you have a raise your hand feature, Counselor Allen and Counselor Fenton, since you are calling in, but I'll get to you right after, uh, Counselor Gomez, if you have a question.
I defer to that. I'm, I'm good. I'm good. My question got already answered.
Counselor Letterman.
Sure. Thanks. Uh, my question's for TJ. Uh, TJ, so, uh, Lindsay was on our last call, I think, and she mentioned that you guys were working on, um, preparing a, a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, I know previously we've been talking about doing a month-to-month budget. Lindsay said maybe that wasn't the case anymore. So can you provide us an update on the budgeting process for the next fiscal year? And also, um, relative to the CARES Act money that we had already accepted, uh, a month or so ago? I know we had, um, sort of talked about coming back and seeing how we were actually going to spend that. So now that we see the state money also coming down, have we actually expended the previous CARES Act funding? Or are we still working to see how that's going to plug into our current, um, you know, deficit spending?
Uh, excellent question. So right now we are, uh, in the process of developing an austerity budget. Uh, we're actually planning on submitting something to the council, uh, the first couple of weeks in June, uh, that takes into account a 28.3% reduction in unrestricted general government aid, uh, as recommended by the Mass Municipal Association as a planning tool. Uh, the school department has already adopted their budget, uh, but they have contingency plans in the case that Chapter 7 doesn't come to fruition. Uh, the budget is not going to be, um, you know, it's going to be, like I said, an austerity budget that, that provides core services, but not much else beyond that. Uh, and it's going to be something where, uh, we go through all the revenue, uh, productions that we're planning on, uh, based upon, uh, what we're projecting. Uh, as far as the CARES money, we haven't spent the CARES money yet, the 4.4 or the 13.6, but we're still mapping out, uh, the best way to, uh, spend it, uh, where, where the most flexibility is. Uh, we've been advised by the Commonwealth to, uh, hold back some of the 13.6 billion, uh, if we can, to apply that towards revenue losses, the off chance that the fourth stimulus doesn't come to fruition at the federal level. Uh, so we're submitting that grant application, uh, for that. So we're going to be strategic between FEMA, uh, all the entitlement grants that we've received that have been accepted by the city council and the allocation from the state, uh, to maximize the reimbursement and to minimize the deficit spending that we have incurred to date.
So I, I read the guidelines that came out from the state about the, the CARES money that's coming down from them. And it, it, if I read it correctly, it seemed like that money couldn't be used for revenue loss.
It cannot be yet, but there, uh, there's two conversations happening now at the federal level. One is a fourth stimulus to backfill revenue at the state and local government level that Congressman Neal is pushing along with the Speaker. And then there's also another conversation happening that the CARES money that's already allocated, can we put that towards revenue losses if the law at the federal level changes, right?
Okay, okay.
Uh, we're just, just in case, we're hoping.
So we should certainly, um, author a letter of support for that change to the law. Um, and I will, uh, I'll, I'll get working on that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. At this time, I'll defer to, uh, the Counselor Allen or Counselor Fenton, if they have a question. Otherwise, I don't see other, any other hands raised in the queue, um, which means...
I'll try it. Can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you. We can hear you.
First time doing this on the phone. Um, TJ, just following up on the, uh, so what is the effect of a, of a deficit spending, you know, the deficit we're incurring as a result of this? What's the effect of that on the next year's budget? Uh, I, I know we're trying to figure out where all the reimbursement comes from, but how will it be reflected in the budget and, or will it be?
Uh, good question, uh, Counselor Allen. So we legally need to have a balanced budget by the end of the fiscal year so we close on our books. Uh, so right now I'm working with, uh, Pat Burns and Lindsay and Tim Brown to project what our revenue losses will be by June 30th. And then we got to cover those losses with the spending freeze and hiring freeze that we have implemented. And then anything beyond that is going to be certified as free cash, uh, for that, uh, for it to be used in FY21's budget purpose. As far as deficit spending goes, uh, we are going to put off, most often the grants because that is the night we've received that we proceed to date. Uh, and if we do not put it to a grant, it is an ineligible expense. We can amortize it over three years, uh, to pay back, uh, the deficit that we've incurred.
Okay. And the, and the free cash you referred to, is that free cash from previous years? Or is that this year's kind of ongoing free cash?
We still have just over $3 million in this year's certified free cash. We just asked for an update to add another $800,000 to our free cash, uh, certification for DOR to help us with FY21. And then I'm also referring to, uh, freeing up, uh, cash for FY21's budget to help us balance the, uh, loss of revenue.
So the free cash that we got from, you know, last year's budget, fiscal year 20 budget, the free cash that came back in January or February or whatever, um, that's still sitting there? We never put that in, um, stabilization?
Correct. So we will be coming to the city council with a plan, um, and making sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, we've been, uh, DOR has allowed us to use the current year allocation of free cash to offset FY21. Uh, so we'll be planning on doing that as a way to avoid using reserves. Six definitely count.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thanks. Thanks for the answer. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Fenton, did you have a question, sir, that you wanted to ask?
Hello?
Counselor Fenton.
Oh, okay. I had to press star six. I figured it out. Okay, you can hear me now, though?
Uh, we can.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Um, so the, I, I have one question, but the first thing I just wanted to say was in response to a statement that was made earlier about, uh, the outdoor dining, uh, endeavor. Um, I'm extremely supportive of that. We've seen examples of it being attempted in places like Rockland, Maine and some Oregon cities that are trying it currently. Um, you know, it's a great opportunity, in my opinion, to expand, uh, the dining options and attract people to specifically the Worthington Street area. So I just wanted to express my overwhelming support for that concept, uh, of having restaurants in the downtown providing outdoor dining options. Um, and if that means that we have to close portions of Main Street or Worthington Street or Bridge Street or streets, uh, in between, uh, I would be very supportive of that, uh, endeavor. And so I want to thank Eddie and his team for looking into it and stand at the ready to help if and when necessary. Uh, my question is for TJ. We've gotten a ton of information in the last few months and really appreciate all the updates. My question is, what do you see as the biggest, uh, financial vulnerability from the city's perspective as a result of COVID-19? What's the thing that keeps you up at night over this, uh, whole issue?
Well, the two things that are really that are driving my anxieties and my stresses are the loss of, uh, state aid, which is, you know, if it's 28.3%, that's 11.3 million, uh, which we have factored into our budget. Uh, and then the second thing is the loss of property taxes of people that either cannot afford to pay or, uh, do, did not or will not pay taxes as of June 1st. Uh, so we're projecting a loss of a few million dollars in property value, property, sorry, property taxes. Those two combined, I mean, we're roughly running, uh, nearly a $40 million deficit based upon, uh, where the department's spending was submitted and requested to what the revenue we project to have available. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have guidance from the state on where they are. We're 60-plus percent funded by the state. It's pretty critical that we know what they're thinking. But they're waiting for the federal government to really, uh, try to figure out how they're going to allocate, uh, their state aid. Uh, we're nervous about Chapter 70 and, you know, Promise Act. Uh, we know that they don't have the revenue support, what they've committed to in the governor's budget. Uh, so we're watching all of that very closely.
And the, but the property taxes are more of a, of a cash flow issue as opposed to a structural budget issue. Because we'll ultimately get the taxes one way or another from a property tax perspective. We've got like a 98% plus, uh, collection rate. And I don't think that that'll change very much, even if it impacts our short-term cash flows. The big, the, the thing that is the most concerning to me is what you just described about state aid because we're so heavily reliant on that aid. So hopefully there's, uh, some solutions that are proposed in DC and on Beacon Hill to, uh, alleviate that major, major issue, um, for gateway cities like Springfield.
We asked for a pre-conference budget and we got emphatic no, uh, from the legislature that they're not approving. So we'll stay tuned and wait for their guidance.
Mike, Counselor Fenton, regarding your comments on the restaurants, uh, Eddie, Eddie walked, you know, the council through what our plan is that we're meeting Ellen and Tim Sheehan and, and everyone regarding, you know, getting these, uh, restaurants back open and what that would look like. But the mayor's directive to the group was to be creative and be as flexible as we possibly can be under the law, mindful that these restaurants are hurting and that, uh, they're small businesses that we have to make sure are robust and lively and all those things. But, but also that we're not just looking at downtown, we're looking across the city because there's restaurants all over that are hurting in the same way. So we're not just looking at the downtown corridor, but we're all over, you know, restaurants and everything to see how we can help, uh, them as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Fenton. It is now 12:18, so we are a few minutes over. Three hands raised in the queue. So what we'll do is entertain those two questions and then we'll wrap up. Uh, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Um, I yield to Counselor Davila because it was about the restaurants. I kind of just wanted to know, um, if streets were going to be blocked off, but I'll wait for the next update.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Davila.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. They, they say that gray minds think alike. And, uh, Counselor Fenton asked some of the questions I was going to ask. But if I just may, uh, follow up, um, to TJ, with TJ. TJ, as Counselor Fenton was very wisely pointing out, uh, the, um, the property tax revenue that we will eventually, we make that up. Uh, and so I, I do realize that, um, with respect to the rainy fund, that, uh, it's my understanding, as you have expressed before, that the state, uh, doesn't usually look well up on one-time allocation. Um, my understanding is we have a $49 million rainy day fund and specifically getting to the water sewer commission. Uh, I am very concerned, extremely concerned, that in the middle of this pandemic, they might get hit with a $140 bill increase. Um, I urge you and, and encourage you to see if, if we can give them some sort of relief. Um, and also I call upon all this, this, uh, federal, state, uh, elected officials, uh, federal agencies to step up. Um, so can you, if you could, could you provide, uh, provide us with a quick thoughts on that?
So, uh, it's my understanding, uh, federal, state government, uh, see if they can assist the water sewer commission. They are completely separate entity. Uh, so I would not support using our cash reserves to prop up another, uh, the water sewer commission. Uh, because that we're going to need for the rainy day for our own services for fiscal '22, '23, '24, uh, as long as we're...
I, 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 thank you, TJ. Just five seconds. Um, do you have any parameters as to when will be an appropriate time to use that rainy day fund?
Yeah. Uh, basically to balance, if I could get through FY21, uh, without using reserves, that would be a victory. That would be looked upon favorably by Standard and Poor's and Moody's. Uh, that's the ultimate goal. Uh, and then when we really get it, get into it where revenue is not available for fiscal '22, '23, '24, we will be tapping into the reserves strategically to balance the budget and maintain core services.
Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Uh, before we give Counselor Gomez the last question, I just want to let counselors know that, um, we are going to have a public speak-out at our meeting on this coming Monday. Our meeting is going to start at 5 o'clock, at which time we will have those who have called into the city council office and signed up to speak. We will entertain those individuals, allow them two minutes, similar to how we have normally done it, uh, in the past. And, um, then we will segue right into our regular meeting. So I just want to give kudos to Solicitor Pacula, uh, to the counselors who know of individuals who would like to participate in the speak-out, please let them know to contact the, uh, city council chambers and to sign up. And, uh, between now and the end of the day, we'll be giving our administrative assistants some guidelines in terms of what it is that they need to do on their end. So thank you, Solicitor, for making that happen and stay tuned. Uh, I know individuals wanted to have their subcommittee meetings or get those up and running. Hopefully I'll have an update for you. Hopefully I'll have an update for you at our city council meeting. Counselor Gomez, you have the last word and then we will move further down.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's just easily going back to where we were talking about the dining. I know we talked about it last time, last update. I just would love to be at least somewhat included in a conversation, opening up a portion of my district and also being the chairman of economic development. And also that, you know, I, I was the sponsor of the seating ordinance. I just, you know, last time I, I checked or I was told that I was going to be including these conversations. This conversation is still happening and I have not been engaged. And those are just three issues that I have a problem with. That one, I am the ward councilor. Two, I am the chairman of economic development. And three, this has to do with the ordinance that I help author. So with that being said, that is, that is, that is, I'm going to be playing hardball. Like, I'm sorry, but that's just what it is. And I, I'm going to be very, very tight on, on some of these issues. I'm not trying to be a pain in nobody's neck, but specifically it is important that I have answers to my constituency. And when you blindly forget that I am the ward counselor who won't have these discussions is the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Thank you. Did you, did you want to respond, Tom, or anybody?
I'll be happy, Counselor Gomez.
You don't have to respond. But go ahead, Solicitor. I'm sorry.
No, Counselor Gomez, give me a call right after the meeting and I'll be happy to go over everything. Where it's really nothing concrete to give anyone other than what I've just said.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just asking a little bit more of involvement. That's all I'm asking, Solicitor. Just a little bit more involvement and respect. It, it just makes me, it just makes me feel that I have a little bit of a, of a conscious say-so, you know, on how it's going to happen. You know, obviously you guys determine how it's going to be rolled out. But just so I'm aware and I don't find out via press release all the time, and that's all I'm asking for. That's all. Thank you so much for your answer.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Thank you to the administrative team who is in the Situation Room. We appreciate you all. Thank you for the updates. Keep up the good work, my colleagues. I will see you on Monday. Have a great day.